South Carcellar, 63 Leach Road. And I'm going to keep my questions strictly to the host community agreement and only that.
Okay.
And before I start, I'm going to say, I took to reading the entire agreement as if the property in question were my own. So I don't really have, I don't want to voice an opinion about pro win, not pro win. I don't really care. The agreement is to benefit Portsmouth, and that's the citizens of Portsmouth. So the first thing I'd like to start with is, I like to know, I went through the latest markup. I'd like to know the date of this current agreement that's posted on the website, when it became available, when it was given to Portsmouth? If we know, more or less, December?
Christmas.
Christmas, perfect, okay. Has every council member here, I'm going to direct this if you don't mind, to all the council members, had the opportunity to see this agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to remind that I believe all councillors submitted an oath to uphold the laws of Portsmouth and Rhode Island, correct?
Of course.
Okay. So having participated on several charter review committees, I'm very well versed in Rhode Island cities and towns' laws, because I've taken the time before. And one is called out in the recitals, calls out Title 44, Chapter 3, Section 9.10. Can somebody explain why that's in this agreement?
You're going to refer to our solicitor?
And that title, by the way, is Title 44 Taxation, Chapter 3, Property Subject to Taxation. And 9.10 is a special provision for Portsmouth and Portsmouth only. I'd like to understand why that's in this agreement.
I think I can help there. I think it's in there because a portion of the payments that are associated with the host community payment structure are dedicated to paying basically an agreed upon tax, a tax for the property of the company that's going to be placed into the town's rights away. So because there's going to be property placed into the town, in the regular situation where someone wants to build a project and place it down, the town would have the right to tax that property for revenues associated with it. And the general laws specifically give the town the opportunity to negotiate out a fixed amount of what that tax payment would be over a period of 10 years. And that comes from the statute that you just cited there. And so it's important that, we think it's an important provision in the agreement because the town, we want the town, we want everybody who's reading the agreement to understand what the authority was of the town to fix the tax payments for the property of the company for that period of time. And that is the relevant authority that gives the town the payment in lieu of tax authority. So that's why it's there. It's there to show anybody who's reading where the town's authority is derived from.
Would you say that Title 44, Chapter 3, 9.10, on its face, was designed to limit the authority to 10 years?
I think that, yeah, of course, it says not for a period, not to exceed 10 years.
Okay, so why are we signing? Do you feel as councillors, according to your oath, that you have within jurisdiction to sign this agreement for 33 years? You're making an enormous decision to sign an agreement and endet Portsmouth for 33 years when you only have authority to go for 10. I don't look for explanations, I'm just warning you that taking the vote could possibly... Now, I know we can play language, but let's be clear. The reason why this taxation is in the Rhode Island laws for Portsmouth is to protect the town of Portsmouth, to make sure that a town council does not vote on something that can endet this town for more than 10 years. Whether you like that or not. By the way, the actual section 9 is 20 years. Somebody, I don't know the reason why, I didn't get a chance to dig in, took, had to wear with all in Portsmouth to restrict the Portsmouth to 10 years. Okay? And I'm going to make special note to the president of the town council because your name is the only name on the back signature page. So you are signing on behalf of all of the representatives. So that's just on that section. On page 3...
If I may answer that, respond to that. If you look at 44-3-9, you'll see lots of subsections, dot 1, dot 2, dot 3, et cetera. Many municipalities across Rhode Island have pilot authority. And you are correct that 9.10 provides the capacity. So town of Portsmouth has taxation authority on a lot of things. Primarily, we're all familiar with standard property tax. There's no limit on the number of years on the standard property tax. However, a special arrangement like the pilot, short of other enabling, and that legislation is limited to 10 years. If you look at Section 6.9 of the HCA, the pilot portion of the payments to the town are for 10 years. Any other payment outside of that is property tax. So that benefits Portsmouth residents in the sense that any new, like any construction, any new addition to the tax levy, it impacts everybody. The pilot does not. So it's beneficial to the builder because they have some certainty and knowability about property tax over a certain period of time, after which whatever the levy is, is what we've agreed to, and it would be treated as property tax. So the limitation of the law that you cited, the only reason I feel like responding, we have perfectly capable council here, is you've called into question the oath I took to follow the law. We are following the law. Section 9.10 of Title 44, Chapter 3, provides for the town to have pilot authority entering into a pilot, following a public hearing, for 10 years. We're not entering into a pilot for longer than that.
Hey, but you're entering into the agreement for 33 years, so why don't you keep the pilot agreement separate? And sign only the pilot agreement?
Because it's all a package. We don't want to have to separately negotiate.
I have to say, I'm not going to split hairs. I understand how clever it was to pull this off. And the 10 year was not picked out of the...
No, the 10 years is picked out of the statute.
...out of the statute to allow us to make a promise to South Coast for 33 years. But the reality is, we're not supposed to be making promises for 33 years. We're only supposed to be promising for 10.
I feel, you are free to read your contract however you choose. I read it as South Coast making a promise to Portsmouth for 33 years.
If it were my contract, I would have two separate contracts here. Because you're not authorized to sign the other side of this contract. So the other question I have is just a question at this point. Section, page 3, 1.3, it says, "In addition, the siting boards may analyze alternative overland routes." Can somebody please explain that? What do we mean, analyze alternative overland routes? In the back of this, in the back of this is a map, and it shows two routes. But today, Lawrence just presented three routes. So the reality is, this is the contract, I hold it in my hand. The map Lawrence presented and the map in the contract don't match. And on top of that, it says alternative routes. Why is that in here? What does that mean? Siting boards may analyze alternative routes? We've been hearing about only two routes all along.
This provision, what we're locking into with the HCA is Exhibit A, which is the two route, potential for the two routes. If there's an additional route, then that would have to be renegotiated. And at this point, the, and I don't want to speak out of context here for the energy facility siting board, but they have the authority, the information's been presented to the EFSP. They could determine that maybe these aren't the feasible routes, and they ask them to evaluate a different route. If that's the case, then we're back renegotiating something that's outside of Exhibit A. Okay, is that, was that an accurate statement?
Yeah, I think it is. It's really, it's a reservation of rights. Because this is, again, as I mentioned earlier, we're just following the logical process that is in the lead of the applicant, that would be South Coast Wind. They filed an application, they've identified their preferred routes, and that's what's in the Exhibit A, the diagram. But you know, we don't have a crystal ball. Nobody can predict, you know, what the siting board is going to ultimately decide. So we wanted to make sure that there was a reservation of rights. In other words, if it turns out that the siting board approves a different route, as the council president said, we're back at the table. That's the whole point of that.
Okay. And then we talk about other such locations in Section 2.1. So it just, to me, it's, we've already picked, we've been listening and looking at maps for a while now. And now all of a sudden, we're saying, well, maybe it won't be any of those. And then here's the thing, though. In Section 5.1, it says that once you sign this, the town agrees not to oppose. So once this is signed, it doesn't matter. We're not opposed. They can decide to put the lines overhead. I don't know. Like I'm saying, I'm just looking at this like if it was my land. I'd be concerned. Page B, 6, 6.1. Jordan brought this up, and I couldn't agree. Approximately 1,200 megawatt phase. What do you mean approximately? Put a minimum and a max in the contract. What does approximately mean? Enough said. If you were president, it was a concern for you as well.
But I think the response was that it can't be more than 1,200.
Then say that. Don't say approximately.
Well, I don't, okay.
I'm just saying, I mean, it's a contract. We should say what the minimum and the max is, or not to be more than.
That might be a clarification, the maximum of 1,200.
Then Section 11.2, they talk about, you know, damages, causes of damages. I'm just going to warn here that Block Island had damages to their power line to the tune of $31 million to rebury it. The company that put the power line in didn't do anything. The electric company wound up having to eat that cost, get that cable reburied. They quoted that number. And then when asked, who pays for it? The ratepayers. Okay? And we agree to that. We're agreeing, hey, if bad things happen, free pass. There's a whole new section, 14.3. It's not just like a couple sentences fixed. To me, it seems Portsmouth be giving up all the rights to raise any objections. And this one really worries me. Section 15.1, I'll end with this one. Portsmouth agrees that if you sign this and you violated any other laws or provisions unknowingly, the contents of this signed agreement prevails. I would take that out. Because just the example I gave you about the state law, we can dispute here, is the contract valid or not? But the reality is, the state law's pretty clear. It's trying to limit the town council's power to 10 years. The contract's for 33. Let's be real. And my point is, let's say this goes, well, basically, we couldn't even go, if somebody wanted to sue us because of that. In here, it basically says, you're letting him off the hook scot-free. This contract prevails.
Okay. Shame, shame, shame.
I think, you know, I don't think, I don't think that's what it's saying. I think the contract, it says right on its face that it's a Rhode Island, it's a Rhode Island contract. I just, it's an agreement that's entered into in Rhode Island. That's the jurisdiction where we are, we're all operating, we're all engaged. That's all it's intended to do. It's describing that in the event that there's a dispute, the laws of the state of Rhode Island will be the laws that will be applied to resolve a dispute, to resolve any dispute.
That's not what it says. It says, "In the event of a conflict with the terms of any administrative order or otherwise, the terms of disagreement shall prevail."
In the event there are conflicts of laws, where there's a confusion about which state's laws, which jurisdiction law, where the word conflicts of laws is talked about, it's talking about laws of other jurisdictions. In this case, it's the law, it's the law of Rhode Island that's going to be applied. And if there's any ambiguity about what were the parties intending, it's the terms of the agreement that are going to control, that are going to be used to educate a judge, say, and what did the company and what did the town mean when they said certain words. The words of this contract are going to be very important to resolve any disputes. That's the whole, really, the whole, the essence of the language that you're referring to.
My only point to come here was to just point out, like, if I had, if this was my property and I had an attorney, I'd put the brakes on and be asking to be certain of these points. And the one that bothers me the most, I'll just conclude here, I've already said it, is the fact that the intent of Title 44 is to limit the power of this council to 10 years, the decisions you make. And the decision you make for 33 years, well, let me ask, I'm going to ask, I don't know the answer to this. Do we have any councillor that served for 20 years? We have someone that served for 10, probably, right? Yeah, how many?
16.
16, that's what I figured. Well, I don't even think we had any for 20. So just think about that, that the contract you're about to sign will have ramifications long beyond any councillor that's ever stuck around. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Carcellar, before you leave, were you satisfied with that answer?
I raised the question because, as you were told, we received this document around Christmas, but it didn't have all the red writing on it. That just came out over the weekend.
Well, I asked that, that's why I asked.
What has changed, but why do we just insert this now? I don't have the answer for that. I don't understand his answer. I hope somebody else did.
Interesting, Mr. Blaisert. So you're saying that you actually haven't had a chance to review this document?
I read it over the weekend. But I didn't have this document, the red line document on Christmas.
Point taken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like everyone else, I received this contract around Christmas, I don't remember exactly. And I provided some of my thoughts on it to the administration. Some of those, some of my comments were incorporated. They were mostly simple things. For example, the capitalized term "host community" was not defined in the contract. Usually, if it's capitalized terms, it means it's a defined term, and so I looked for a definition. I asked about it because in case "host community" was something defined in some statute, I wanted to know what obligations might be coming out of the fact that it's using that term here. And I was told, no, that was, we can clarify that. So one of the red lines you'll see in the document is in the very first line, where "town of Portsmouth", parentheses, "Portsmouth" or "town", and now added "host community". So "host community" just means the Portsmouth. Several of the red lines in here are of that caliber of, how about we just define the term that we're using? Simple stuff. On behalf of the entire legal profession dating back probably to, I'd say, the 1500s or so, I'm sorry, it looks like English. It's not. It's contract language. I just want to address the last comment raised by Mr. Carcellar about consent to jurisdiction and about the agreement being governed and construed as a Rhode Island contract. If this contract ever ends up in a court of law in some lawsuit, the judge is going to want to know what the words mean. And many of these words are terms of art, and they may have a slightly different meaning in Delaware versus New York versus Nebraska versus Rhode Island. We want Rhode Island law because we have much cheaper access to Rhode Island lawyers if we need them. And so it's important that we give guidance to the court. This is, when you hear the phrase boilerplate, this is boilerplate. This agreement shall be governed and construed. Construed means constructed. Construed means how a contract is read and understood. Construed as a Rhode Island contract, exclusive of its conflict of law rules. That's another Lee Blais turn of phrase that means, doesn't matter if that conflicts with New York law or if we have rules about how to apply different states' laws. No, we are reading by contract. This will be governed, this will be interpreted as how this contract would be read under Rhode Island law. We want that, helps us. I don't know where South Coast Wind's lawyers are. Let them hire Rhode Island lawyers. There's language here that says, any lawsuit would be brought in Rhode Island courts. Again, we want that. We don't want some company hailing us into court or trying to in Delaware or wherever. They got to sue us here. We also have to sue them here. That's fine. That last new red language you saw, the consent to jurisdiction. What was in the contract before just said, we agree to file here. But then they can go complain about it and try to say, well, we're not really subject to Rhode Island law. The new text helps Portsmouth because it makes them consent to the jurisdiction of the Rhode Island courts. Again, this is really boring stuff. This is boilerplate. It's important because we want to be in Rhode Island court if anything should ever happen. This language helps Portsmouth, it does not hurt Portsmouth. They waive the right, if they sign this, if we approve it, they waive the right to object that they don't like, that they don't think Rhode Island courts have jurisdiction over them. So I understand that if you're not familiar with these types of turns of phrases in a legal contract, that these are foreign-looking terms. And interpreting it as though it's just ordinary English seems odd, or maybe doesn't seem right. But I can assure you, as a lawyer practicing now 24 years, god, I'm getting old, this is, this helps Portsmouth, and it's appropriate.
Okay, we are going to continue, move on. I do ask folks to be as brief and concise with your comments as possible. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak on Martha Cozziari Miller Street. And I am basically here because I noticed, going back to November 2nd, that the partnership with Southwind had changed, and Shell had pulled out. And I just didn't know if everybody was aware of that and paid a big penalty. And it seems to me, based upon the research that I've done, that the partner with the biggest stick is not Southwind, it's Oceanwind. And Oceanwind's, their parent company is E, D is in Dog, P is in, well, the People's Republic of China. And there are eight board members of the parent company of Oceanwind. And all but one are from Singapore, China, and have actually, the government of Singapore and the president of China a couple of days ago joined together for a press conference where they asserted that Singapore is not an ally of the United States of America and will not engage in any military cooperation with the United States of America. Now, why do I mention this? It's very important, it's very significant. As I said, the primary partner in this endeavor doesn't really seem to be Southwind, it seems to be Oceanwind. And their board members, and if someone, one of you will give me an email address at the end of the meeting, I'd be happy to send you every bit of the documentation. It's all from press releases, Reuters. It's all documented in their own words. Anyway, I just didn't know whether the people of Rhode Island and Massachusetts felt comfortable with the notion that the primary partner in this endeavor would be an entity that is controlled by the People's Republic of China through a bank by the name of Haitong, H-A-I-T-O-N-G, Haitong International. And a bank that was originally from Portugal, which of course, parts of China were taken over by the Portuguese centuries ago. And since a lot has been in the news recently about certain billionaire Chinese investors and Chinese entities buying on hundreds of thousands of acres of American farmland, forests, water supplies off the Colorado River and places like that, whether we all felt comfortable with the notion of having a power grid in the hands of people who essentially hands it to the People's Republic of China. I know I don't feel comfortable, particularly. And if I may share a little of my background as to why I'm so terrified by the notion of this partnership that you're considering. For approximately 10 years, I worked at the United States Naval War College. I was the social media manager, researcher, and content creator for every chief of naval operations since Admiral Mike Mullin, right up to the current CNO, first woman, Lisa Franketti. Every single thing that I wrote was read not just by America's friends, but by America's foes. In particular, I was always wary of the Chinese, the Russians, the North Koreans, and people like that. So I made sure that all of my research was very particular, very accurate. Because, I mean, I actually could have started something really nasty if I got it wrong, you know what I mean? So I've spent a lot of time, very carefully, looking into the background of Southwind and Oceanwind. And I'm very alarmed by what I'm seeing. Now, I'm not against renewable energy at all. My nephew is the CEO of one of the biggest renewable energy firms in the United States. And it's a good thing. I'm very concerned about who owns it. And when you're talking about Equine Island, you're talking about all of the tenant commands at Naval Station Newport, including the Naval War College, okay? Where we play our war games, all right? The War College, that's where the Surface Warfare Officers School Training is located, all the schools for the United States Navy. And then we're looking at Newark, which is the think tank, if you will, the scum works, for all... for all of the sonar systems for nuclear submarines. And now Governor Ramondo has made sure that NOAA, which comes under the Commerce Department, is going to be building a new facility there. And what really concerns me is the easy access of Burma Road and across the island, all the way to Melville, all the way to the War College, where some of the most top-secret stuff that's going on in the United States of America takes place. And yet, Southwind's, their primary partner is Oceanwind's, and that truly, truly concerns me. And, um, another thing that concerned me, um, from, um, an economic development perspective, when I looked up Southwind's, you know, you go to a website and it gives the, the address of their, their offices, their headquarters. And the address was 99 South Main Street in Fall River. Does anybody else know who owns that building? His name is James Carrum of First Bristol, and he's the guy who wants to partner with Marshall Properties to develop Weaver's Cove. And he's also partnering to develop the Middletown Center on land that Middletown owns. So basically, if he gets his way, he's gonna control everything along Burma Road from Melville to the Naval War College. So I think that's very important food for thought. And maybe I need to say I need a little more time to discuss this and delve into it. Because one thing that popped up, um, very recently was that the town of Falmouth, very similar to us, we've got the Navy, the Naval War College, Newark, all of that. Well, they've got Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. And, um, they were so displeased with what they quote, and you can find this online in the news, they were so displeased, the Town Council of Falmouth, with the lack, their words, not mine, the lack of transparency by Southwind's that they said, "We're not gonna allow you access to the land, we're not gonna do it." And do you know what Southwind's said? And it's actually, actually in writing. They said, "We don't care, we're gonna do it anyway." So please, I would ask of you, take this in mind. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Counselor. If I may, just a couple of quick clarifications. First of all, back to the, the previous speaker discussing Block Island and the trenching and the, uh, quote that the utilities had to pay and then that was passed on to the ratepayer. I just wanted to be very clear that it was the utility that made that contract. They installed that line initially, so therefore, you're right. They did end up having to pay for the failure that was under their contracting and their planning. Uh, so I just want to make the differentiation. In our case, it would be our contracting, our responsibility. We would have to take on any of those costs. They would not be passed on to utility ratepayers with the town. To the point that the previous speaker, uh, please, I'd be glad to give you, uh, my email also. I would be very pleased in your research to, uh, understand and appreciate your diligence.
Are you talking today?
Yes.
Oh, well, you represent Southwind, so I'm pretty sure you know it. I'm gonna share it with the Town Council.
No, that's fine, thank you. I just made it, no problem, just was asking. Uh, I specifically work at South Coast Wind. I am an employee of Oceanwind's. Uh, Oceanwind's, you're correct, is a joint venture between a French utility called Enji or Angi, the French pronunciation. It's a very large French utility, uh, very similar to another name you may have heard of, Electricité de France, EDF. And then the other partner, as you correctly say, is EDP, which is a very large conglomerate, which as you've noticed, started in Portugal. They have a very large presence in Houston. They've been in the energy business here in the United States for some 20-plus years. And, uh, they have also, uh, some presence here in New England. I'd also note that Angi has a strong presence here in, uh, New England on a lot of work around Massachusetts and Rhode Island.
Yes, I know what I'm saying.
No, again, uh, what I'm trying to do is clarify for this group, uh, in these large conglomerations that we work with, uh, the effort that we, uh, conduct is a 50%, 50% partnership with South Coast Wind. You highlighted is Oceanwind's. Their headquarters are in Madrid. They are a European entity. I then want to correct the other one, which is Shell, is very much a full and wholesome partner in South Coast Wind.
Why did they announce on November 2nd that they were withdrawing and paying penalties?
Well, glad to get to that. So, uh, I want to be clear, South Coast Wind is the other 50% shareholder in, pardon me, Shell is the 50% shareholder in South Coast Wind. So it's very normal. We are South Coast Wind, we are a project part, a project entity. 50% Oceanwind's, 50% Shell. The point that you, uh, state is, is correct, but I'd like to just clarify, uh, South Coast Wind was the one that did terminate its contracts with, uh, on the power purchase agreements that was stated in a variety of publications. And, uh, the partnership remains whole, and that's why we, uh, went forward in a very, uh, public process. We worked through with utilities and the state government. And now we are preparing with an intent to prepare a response to the upcoming bids to, in effect, proceed again with those contracts. And we'd be glad to clarify, uh, more on any of those points.
Okay, um, actually, I, I want to clarify. Uh, this is, this is a public hearing, and, and I will give, actually, I, I should give you the opportunity to respond to questions, or we as a council should respond to, to questions if we can at the time. Because what I, what I don't want to happen is what just happened, where you were trying to respond and we had your, although, Ms. Cozziara, you were at the podium, you stepped away from the podium and you were shouting from the audience. And then stuff gets lost, well, talking loudly from the audience, gets lost in translation, it doesn't get recorded by the town clerk. So really, from, from the process, uh, all the discussion should come from the podium. So my apologies for maybe not allowing you to respond quicker. Um, but, uh, moving forward, that's the process. Some folks are feeling compelled to shout out from the audience. Please, do not, do not do that. It's very disruptive, and it is a little disrespectful to the folks that are sitting up here trying to listen, and we're hearing your comments. So please, um, you know, keep that to, I, I just don't want to hear the comments up front. And, um, it, it does, you're gonna do it?
No, you should, you should hear the comments.
No, no, this, if you want to speak, you can come up. You're not gonna shout.
The person that's shouting is you, sir.
The, the person that's shouting?
The person that's shouting. This is a public hearing. Try to control the venue, we all agree.
This is a public hearing, and I'm gonna ask you, if you're gonna speak, to come to the podium. This is, there is gonna be some organization here. We're not gonna have shouting out from the, from the audience. It's not how it works.
My name is Camille Nixon. I live at 7th and Bradford Street, but I'm in Warren. And I'll tell you why I'm here. I called Rhode Island Energy and asked them if we could get our energy from wind, which is what we were doing with National Grid before. And I guess, I don't know where it was coming from, but they said that with this new project that's coming, that that might be a possibility. And we really want to do that. And I really commend you for, for going ahead with this. That you're, you know, you're gonna be a beacon for this Northeast, and you should really be, I thank you for going through all of this stuff you have to go through to get this passed, because it's really, you're on the grandmother. Uh, we need to address this climate change. It's already late, it's been two years since this has been going forward. We're supposed to be at, you know, level at, in the 2030, and we're not there, we're not going to be there unless we do something now. There's no more postponing this. And I understand that people are nervous about this company, and, but they're assuring us, and they, this man just said that the utilities are gonna be underground, so there's no reason to think that it's gonna be something that we're gonna see. The other thing I'd like to say is that we live on the water in Warren, and we see the windmill across the, the Warren River over to Warwick. And it is a beautiful thing, and every time I see it, I'm thankful that we're thinking about the future. So I just wanted to say thank you, and please, let this happen.
Hi, I'm a local fisherman. My name is Keith Huzzell. I'm from Wareham, Massachusetts. I fish out of New Bedford, Massachusetts. I came here today because I wanted to speak about how the effects of these turbines are affecting our marine life.
Okay, yeah. The, the public hearing is, is really on the, the HCA. We're not on the turbines and the stuff offshore. It's outside of our jurisdiction. Your, your comments would be better suited for those agencies that have jurisdictions such as the Coastal Resource Management Council, EFSP. Tonight, we're here to discuss the Host Community Agreement. Not the, not the Cape, not the turbines offshore.
I agree, but every time one of these things gets plugged in, it's taking away from fishing jobs. And you're getting, you're getting temporary union jobs on land and some out at sea, but you're taking away permanent commercial fishing jobs. And I get that, you know, these, these cables are being buried and they're going, uh, into the town of Portsmouth. But, um, I'm sorry.
No, I, I apologize, but, but unfortunately, again, we, we do not have the, we do not have the jurisdiction to, to approve or deny the, the turbines or any of that. What, what we're tasked with from EFSP, or would be tasked with, is to have an advisory opinion on the things that the town of Portsmouth has authority over. The things that the town of Portsmouth has authority over are work within our right of way, work within our public right of way. That would be our, our streets. A, a lot of this project is not on the town of Portsmouth land. Boyd's Lane and a portion of Anthony Road are controlled by the state DOT. Really, the town of Portsmouth has about 2,000 feet of Anthony Road that we would be entering into potentially an easement.
Getting $23 million for 2,000.
That, that'd be a grown-up. That's what, that's what our control is. Our control is within the town. We, we only have authority over the town land. We don't have control.
You're at the year of the end, you're where they plug into. So you have the right to say no to.
We, we're not where they plug into. We are not where they plug into.
So if you say no, where are they gonna go next?
Hey, here's the thing. Here's the thing, folks. Here's the thing. The, the EFSP is going to be the final authority that issues or denies this project. And we've said this before, even if the, if the town of Portsmouth, okay, said, "We're," if the town says, "No, we're opposed to it," it could still happen, and they could still put the conduits in and across the town, the town of Portsmouth. That can still happen. They are the, they are the final authority. All we're doing is issuing an advisory opinion to the EFSP.
Why don't you guys get the bribe money from them, that's what it is.
Sir. I, thank you for your comments.
People have opinions.
I, I, you, you have, you're entitled to your opinion, and I would like you to just keep your opinion on the Host Community Agreement. And if you think it's whatever you just used for a term, that's, thank you for your comments.
My name is Corey Wheeler Forest, 587 Boyd's Lane, fourth generation Portsmouth resident. My family has been harvesting local seafood here since the 1800s. I'm a fish, fish dealer and have been a commercial fisherman out of Secana Point for nearly 30 years. The meeting here tonight is specifically regarding a Host Community Agreement that will provide the cheapest and easiest route for the offshore wind developer to deliver electricity to and for Massachusetts. However, the decision you make tonight is not just about Portsmouth. And South Coast Wind, with its 147 turbines and up to five offshore substations, is not the only developer. The cumulative impacts and matting costs on our communities, natural environment, cultural resources, and fisheries of thousands of offshore wind turbines up and down our eastern seaboard must carefully be regarded and considered. On February 24th, 2012, Governor Chafee, Senators Reed and Whitehouse, and Congressman Cicilline gathered at Save the Bay to celebrate the removal of Cox's Ledge, a critical fishing area, from consideration for development in the wind energy area, calling it a victory for fishermen. They called it an extensive stakeholder process and had ensured that future offshore wind turbines were appropriately sited with minimal impact on the environment, fishermen, and boaters. Reed said this will help protect the livelihoods of Rhode Island fishermen. Whitehouse said, "I'm glad the concerns of the Rhode Island fishing industry were taken into account. Doing so will protect our environment and existing coastal industries." 12 years later, they are building on Cox's Ledge with zero consideration for who and what they claim to protect. Our appointed Coastal Resources, Resources Management Council, CRMC, claims to lead the nation in its unique approach to offshore wind review with the careful assessment of a fisheries advisory board. Late last summer, the entire Fishermen's Advisory Board resigned in protest of what they charge as a process that unfairly favors developers, ignores, ignores the board's concerns, and downplays the negative impacts on fish stocks and marine habitats. In a Providence Journal article from last June, July, a CRMC board member and state engineer accused South Coast Wind of lying to agencies in a misleading statement or part of a larger pattern with the company. The article also states that council staff repeatedly urged them to look at the overland route for the cable to avoid the Secana River, an essential fish habitat classified by the New England Fishery Management Council. NOAA, in its comments to Boam on South Coast Wind Project, also expressed their preferred land-based alternative to avoid the Secana River to reduce the impact on aquatic resources and designated habitat areas of particular concern for juvenile cop. Last month, the CRMC approved South Coast Secana River Transmission, Transmission Line. So far, the CRMC has approved every offshore wind project that's come before them. Rhode Island is the ocean state for a reason, and fishing has always been a fundamental part of coastal communities and the backbone of our nation's food security and supply. The aggressive plan to cover our earth and oceans with wind turbines and its negative environmental impact far exceeds any benefit. We must protect our open wild spaces. Our seed is not for sale. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I just want to make a correction. The CRMC, last month, said they would not, they would not, uh, they, pardon me, they would consent to the federal portion. Please, the CRMC regarding the Secana River is, will be in the future. Um, we published the schedule previously on our presentation. We'll notify you so you can go and stand in front of CRMC and discuss your concerns.
And really quickly, one other thing. Um, the energy from the project is going to be delivered to New England, not Massachusetts. We share a regional electrical grid with all six New England states. Um, and Connecticut, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts are working together to prepare offshore wind, um, by January 31st. So Rhode Island customers should be able to benefit from this project as well.
Kelsey, could I just ask you a question? Currently, and I, I don't know if Lawrence mentioned it, are we getting our electricity, where, where are we getting our electricity from right now? Where, where does the electricity to Aquinic Island come from?
The, uh, the feed in IS New England is two points. A, the mix is natural gas, nuclear, hydro, all those things that come. It's very similar from whether you're in, uh, Fall River or here, uh, or this region. And then your actual electrons come both from the 115 KB line, it's not far from where we are, coming in from Pottersville and Brecken Point, right around the Somerset area. And then you also get, obviously, in on the southern portion of Aquinic.
So, so a portion of, of the electricity that's coming onto Aquinic Island is coming across the Secana River? Correct? Through Tiberian, Fall River, Somerset?
If I may, a major amount.
I just wanted to, to clarify, because there have been comments that, we do not receive any electricity from Massachusetts. This is only going to provide electricity to Massachusetts. And it was my understanding that it's a New England grid, and when you connect into the grid, the distribution is to, to more, the, the grid does not, does not identify state boundaries. And so we are currently getting our electricity, portions of us are getting our electricity from Massachusetts. So I just, just wanted to, to clarify that. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment that having worked at Breakenpoint at one point in my career, that basically the electricity is tied into your contracts. So if we don't have a contract with, we Rhode Island Energy don't have a contract with South Coast Wind, then in theory, there may be electrons coming over from Massachusetts, but nobody in Rhode Island is getting the benefit of them. We're not paying for them. We're buying them from another utility. And some of your electricity might be coming from the roof, my roof of top, solar installation. And I'm not against the renewable energy. It's just how this whole project, this whole concept doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Next.
My name is Katie Egan, 08 Shipahquasette Road, Prudence Island. I am the owner and operator of a 35-foot commercial fishing vessel, Shellback. My home port is Potter's Cove on Prudence. I'm a second-generation, lifelong, year-round commercial fisherman on near-organic bay, concentrating my efforts in the East Passage and Mount Hope Bay. Throughout the year, I've trapped whelks and fish in Daffercall House. I am currently serving on the Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Council, chair of the Shellfish Advisory Panel, and I'm on the Portsmouth Harbor Commission. As a Portsmouth resident, I asked the town council not to agree due or sign the host community agreement. The agreement states that, in the recital, "Town, protect the best interests of its residents, businesses, and corporate organizations at all times to ensure that the project is constructed, operated, and maintained in a safe and efficient, efficient and beneficial manner," unquote. In fact, it has the potential for the opposite. After tonight, South Coast will be one step closer to critically impacting my business. Mount Hope Bay is a vital spawning area for Channel Whelk, one of the last remaining lucrative fisheries in the upper bay. My business relies on a productive and healthy ecosystem, and 50% of my traps are north of Mount Hope Bridge to the Massachusetts state line. South Coast plans to plow a trench across the bay over two years during spawning season. The effects will be felt for years because not only will juveniles not survive, the spawning stock mortality will be catastrophic. Channel Whelk is not the only fishery dependent on an undisrupted substrate. There is a vibrant fall mantis shrimp fishery sustaining our inshore otter trout fleet. Mantis shrimp command the highest price per pound of any harvested species in the state of Rhode Island. They live most of their lives in tunnels under the seafloor until the fall, when fishermen are able to harvest them. During the height of the season, there are over 30 small-scale, independently-owned, commercial fishing boats in Mount Hope Bay using a variety of gear types for 24 hours a day. They're all working with one another to avoid conflict. This cable will upend this cooperation. The effects of climate change are the number one problem facing the commercial fishing industry. We're perpetually adapting to warming water and species reacting to it. If there's anyone that wants to slow this trend, it's the commercial fishing fleet at large. But plowing a trench through spawning areas and disruptive, disrupting migratory patterns will not help us reach this goal. Unfortunately, because this project is bad tracked through the EPA, no studies have been done to help us find a more effective alternative. By voting yes on the HCA tonight, you're forfeiting every right to comment on the project locally, at the state level, or federally, and carte blanche for South Coast to construct and expand without limits. You are abandoning all protection of the people and potentially violating the harbor management plan that you all approved. No town in Massachusetts would agree to these terms, so why should we? By delegating all authority to a private entity, councilors, you're abandoning all of your obligations to the people that have elected you, which is inconsistent with your duties. Thank you.
Abigail Kearney-Ground, I'm here tonight representing two entities. One is the Harbor Commission of the Town of Portsmouth, of which I'm the chair. Also, I am head of the Portsmouth Rights of Way. I'm here because the Harbor Commission feels very strongly about you not signing this contract tonight. We feel that all the industry that we have in Portsmouth is all about boating, is all about fishing, and it's all about the water. I don't see how having this trench dug down, it's not me, the Harbor Commission does not see, having the trench dug down the Secana River Bay during any part of the season that could affect our boaters, affect our fishing vessels, it is not going to help our town. It is not going to benefit us, and it certainly is not going to help. Thank you.
My name is Pete Hewitt, Leonard Wendy Drive, Bristol, Rhode Island. One note, the slide you had up there of the flooding in Posh Street, I think if you go back 10, 20, 30, 40 years, you'll find that area flooded often, which kind of brings me by point that all of you who believe the climate change, if the earth is about to implode because of climate change, it's a host. I have a couple of comments, questions I would ask of South Coast. I understand that South Coast previously was Mayflower, the Mayflower Enterprise. Two, I understand when you canceled your power purchase agreement, you had to pay a fine. I'd be interested in knowing how much of a fine you paid and where did the money come from. Three, I'm going to ask you a question, ask you for an honest answer. Would South Coast be involved in developing this project were it not for the heavy subsidies by the federal and state taxpayers to subsidize the operation? And I guess that's, oh, lastly, for everybody's information, I'm a member at Montauk Country Club, and one of the options for bringing the cables across Aquinic Island was to go through Montauk Country Club. By a vote of the membership, that was, the easement was disapproved. 185, 154. And my understanding from the briefing that last day, the membership over at Montauk, the cables would be buried 40 to 50 feet under the parking lot and under the several holes. But I heard tonight that the easement coming across Aquinic Island and the town or non-town owned property would be going down six feet. So I'm just wondering if that is accurate, predicated upon the 50 or 50-foot depth going across Montauk Country Club. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the questions. I'll go ahead and stand up. I will address the first two. So yes, the name of the company used to be Mayflower Wind. We changed the name in 2022 to South Coast Wind, to better align with the communities that we're working in. We did terminate our power purchase agreements in Massachusetts, as Lawrence mentioned, and paid a $60 million fine for that termination, which is now done. Lawrence?
Tax subsidies are used in all kinds of industries. They're written into permanent law for the last 40, 50 years for oil and gas exploration. And the renewable energy industry across all, hydro, solar, wind, onshore wind, all have certain incentives to get them on the ground. As you notice, the production tax credit and the investment tax credit also have sunset mechanisms. As industries gain foothold and lessen their costs, they then lose those opportunities. The business is operational to construct and operate energy facilities. That's the expertise that these companies bring forward. And just like, as I mentioned, all businesses, these early subsidies get you going. They are not the sole reason for the company being in here. I assure you that the profit margins are less than typical businesses. And I would also highlight the significant risk and money you have to spend before you have everything, if we may all together. Your next question is on Montauk is correct. We've been engaged with Montauk for a while to communicate and work with the membership. The various entities within Montauk continue to process through their bylaws. And you're correct on a vote that was held. And that is, we wish them well in that perspective. And we will continue to engage a variety of routes, as we've highlighted here, on Aquinic. And then your last item is correct. The coastal area on the bottom of Boyd's Lane will use a horizontal directional drilling, which will bring it some 30, 40 feet under there. And then we would work, if we were at Montauk, to go from the parking area in front of the clubhouse, and it would project down, and it would end up being a good 60, 80 feet under the rail tracks and down through there. And then the rest of the trenching is outlined, would be in that six-foot depth. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me just ask for clarification. So your answer to my question about whether or not South Coast would still be engaged as a developer on these offshore wind projects without the federal, state taxpayer subsidies, you would still be proceeding because that would not be an incentive for you to cease the decision? If you would deny those subsidies, you would continue to proceed?
Sorry, can we talk about the HCA here?
Yeah, I can't, we can't comment for our sponsor companies, but that's not the sole reason for us pursuing the project. It's a benefit.
Let's move on. And I, let's, yes, try to refocus and keep comments to the HCA. We have been getting off track. Yeah, we've been getting off track with impacts that are outside of the town's jurisdiction. So if we could keep focus on what the town has control over, I would appreciate it. Mr. Chris Morris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Chris Morris, 50, Kristen Court. My first question is regarding the decommissioning of a system. Should South Coast Wind end its business for us? The issue is really with Vineyard Wind, which was in the news yesterday morning, that they had admitted that without the federal government waiving the decommissioning costs, they wouldn't be able to be in this business. So they are located, as previously mentioned, about 15 miles south of the Vineyard, Arthur's Vineyard. So it's a relevant issue. It's in the same area. So my question is, does South Coast Wind intend to negotiate the waiver of the decommission escrow account?
I don't have direct input on that at this moment. We, as you know, are much less mature from Vineyard Wind on their process. We have the federal BoM requirements, and we will be following forward, and we will keep in full communication. Okay? I await that answer should it develop. But the point would be obvious, and that is, the town would be set, or somebody else decides South Coast Wind would decommission the system if any of it is required. I think in the HCA, if there isn't going to be any requirements, they'll just stop business and leave the cables in the ground. But I think that needs to be further investigated. Number two question, how do we negotiate, not the council and government, the town of Portsmouth, negotiate disagreement with South Coast Wind?
Turn that over to our negotiating team.
Well, I should just point out, thank you for the question. But the first question on the decommissioning, I think, I just wanted to clarify that the agreement references that the decommissioning of the project is part of the permitting and licensing process. In other words, the EFSP, the siting board with its review of the project, is going to set the conditions that will guide the company in terms of the process that they use. That's not part of it. That's never been part of an HCA. It was never, we don't get into that detail here. That's a siting board review. They'll be identifying that. The application for the siting board, and I think we've referenced it, is that it might be, it just might be the case that, you know, 20, 30 years from now, it may be the safest and the most environmentally beneficial thing to just leave the cables in the ground. No decisions are made. That's just something for the future to consider. But that's all this agreement is in reference to with the decommissioning. And then, sorry, with the other question had to do with, oh, yeah, the process. Okay. I mean, it's a contract negotiation process. So we, we have our team, that is, the town manager, the town solicitor, myself, the staff of the town, the finance department, the task department, the planning offices, the DPW director, you know, any, the whole town, basically your town, and your staff in your town, were available to us to answer questions and help guide us and give us input. South Coast Wind has their legal team. They have a negotiating team that they put together. And just like in any negotiation, there's just a lot of dialogue and back and forth about proposals and ideas and just the way negotiations to take place, no different than in, you know, in any other context. It's just the back and forth of the legal and contract negotiation process.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Back when this subject first came to town, we had repeated promises from members of council that this would be developed, this agreement would be developed. Although I don't know that we had an HCA in mind at the time, but the agreements associated with this cable system would be negotiated in public. And yet what we're seeing here is a presentation of what appears to be a final document for approval tonight, is certainly what the agenda says. And I think Mr. Katsman commented, he anticipated in some fashion with this thing as well. It wasn't negotiated in public by the council. And I think that's my point. Moving on.
We do not negotiate any contracts in public. I think any contract that the town has ever been involved with is a negotiation process, and any final review and vote is in public. And I know that I made that very clear in earlier workshops, that if and when an HCA was presented, it would be discussed and voted on in public. And that's what we are doing. This HCA essentially came to fruition just after Christmas, and then there was some subsequent revisions that had been posted to the website. That's how long this has been in existence. The actual document came to councilors just after Christmas timeframe. So this has not been in the works. There's been frameworks for discussions and negotiations back and forth. That's what happens in a negotiation. This is what they came to agreement on, and it's what's presented before us tonight. And this is when we're discussing it, and we'll vote on it if, at the conclusion of a public hearing. And that's pretty much how all of our contracts and agreements work.
Well, this is, certainly, we talked about contracts here, but we're also talking about a plan that is going to affect this town substantially. Citizens of town, many of them, are interested in the process so that they can have some say in the process instead of being presented with the fait accompli on a Tuesday night. So it is, it's harder to catch up, as you must know, with these documents. You're sitting at home and you're reading as carefully as you can. Our ability to read these documents is, of course, limited, as Mr. Katsman pointed out carefully for us, by a lot of legalese. And so, you know, it takes us some time to work our way through these documents. I would appreciate a little longer opportunity. I'm referring to the red marked one, not the first one. So moving on.
If I may, Mr. President, I think there's a lot of people waiting in line here, and we have a time limit on how long we can be in this building. Could we kind of keep track of time and maybe give people a five-minute limit? Otherwise, I fear that there's a lot of people who are not going to get the chance to speak up if we keep spending 15 minutes on this person. So can we be respectful of everybody else standing in line and maybe try to keep it to three to five minutes per person?
You know, my remarks are always a lot shorter when I don't give them. You know, my remarks are always a lot shorter when I don't get interrupted by that speech. And I give them up as by numbers of council all the time.
We're trying to respond to your question and comments so that we don't have a shouting match back and forth when you're taking your seat.
I've never shouted at the council.
Okay, continue on.
My second to the last is the provisions for negotiations between South Coast Wind and private citizens. As we all know, and we've heard many times tonight, that the town disagreement makes the town government essentially abandon any participation in any kind of negotiations as far as I can see. So if there is a private negotiation, if there's a private issue between private citizens and, and South Coast Wind, is there, it doesn't appear to be any role in town government for mediating those things in this agreement.
No, but I mean, it's private property. Why would the town, why would the town intervene in a, in a private property?
So your, your question is, is if a group of citizens came in front of the town council
and said, "We would like you to oppose X portion of this project," would you do that for us? If this agreement is signed, the answer is no, we cannot as the town council or the town government. But that does not stop any citizen or member of this council individually from going and testifying in front of the CRMC or the EFSD or if they felt like it, going down the bone and testifying in front of them. Does that answer your question?
Not entirely, because I didn't say group. I'm referring to individuals.
Yeah, or individual.
But the reference to group is relevant because we've had these sort of things in the past. Councils just cast them all loose and they had to negotiate with the contractor themselves regarding winter. And I don't want to go down that route, but the, but I was hoping that there was something in this document that helped us solve that future problem. So my last comment is, in section sixteen, which is entitled Notes, there's a list of who we send notices to regarding transactions involved with this agreement. And I would suggest that the town clerk be added so that it gets on the public record. Thank you.
Roman numeral fifteen, you're talking about. All correspondence with towns should be addressed in. Is that where you're looking at?
Yeah, it's section sixteen.
So we know where we're at?
Hello, my name is Rhonda Gilbert. I live at 155 Secana Boulevard in Portsmouth, in Island Park. And I actually just have two questions. I'm relatively new to town. I'm very impressed with some of the information people have come up with, I have to say. I am concerned about ownership of, of the energy. But my questions are two. One, how would this project affect our electricity rates? Number one. And the other thing regarding this agreement, I guess I'd like a little more information on how that's going to benefit the residents of Portsmouth, the money that's coming in. It's been kind of a...
So the first question was, where does the, like, the electricity, how would it affect the rates?
Like, what, you know, if they're putting in this, this rate system is, you know, there are people who say that actually your rates will go up because of the cost of, of the project and you should be happy about that because it's green. Like, a lot of people are saying, "I'm not against alternative energy." I'm trying to understand how this is going to benefit the residents of Portsmouth.
Lawrence, is there a show answer to that? Because it's tied to the power purchase agreement with the energy provider, correct?
The energy is bid in IASU New England and/or the state's utility process. That is put through a rigorous process to understand the pros and cons to rate payers long-term perspective. And I would say that it is in your, believe it or not, that you're in good hands with those groups and your Department of Public Utilities making those decisions on how they consider the various mix of rates. I would highlight that renewable energy has the benefit of long-term predictability because we are not exposed to the volatility of changes in fuel prices.
So in previous projects, have rates been stable or lower or did they tend to go up? Their wind projects?
Wind projects that I have personally been involved in, they've been very stable and they have held or have been lower.
So the next question was about how would the money benefit the town?
Yeah, you know, as part of the agreement, the host agreement, yeah.
So the money would be set aside for, you know, what's in the documents is climate resiliency projects or project, other projects beneficial to the town as determined by the town council. So these, we don't have specific dedicated projects, but they would be used for projects to benefit the town. Could be addressing flooding issues, climate resiliency. There's different things that could be done, but the money can be used by the town for these projects to benefit the town. It's, you know, it, there's, the town has a discretion as to how they may use the funds, but the intent is to use them to benefit the citizens of the town.
All right, thank you.
Okay, there's, there's lots of capital projects that, that could benefit from some funding.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, the amount of money doesn't, in this day and age, doesn't seem that huge. So I just wonder how far it's going to go.
Well, but every little bit helps because otherwise it's coming, potentially coming out of taxes.
Yeah.
That's, you know, there is something there.
Okay, thank you.
Carol Mello, 158 Massasoil Avenue, Portsmouth.
You can bring the mic over to you.
Wow, okay. So I'm here to ask you to please say no to the cables, basically, because, well, let me tell you a little about, about myself. I'm, I hope the mercury married a credential.
Ms. Mallow?
You can't hear me?
No, I can hear you. You've, you've gone through this on previous, we know who you are and we know a lot about your background from previous. It's on video from previous. So if you could just kind of own in on the HCA.
Not everyone does.
But, but I'm not sure that you're back.
Okay, all right, I won't do that.
I am, I'm letting her talk, but I'd like it to kind of reel in to the HCA.
Okay. So now I have to find the spot that I want to really talk about.
Probably go to page three.
Right at the end?
No, I'm sure it's, it's in there, I know you.
So the areas of the Secana River, the Mount Hope Bay, that South Coast are trying to build turbines on in prime fishing areas where they want to lay cables and are prime fishing and spawning areas for over a hundred species of fish. And I know I've said that before, but you talk about the cable and it isn't just a cable. A cable is a connector. It's connecting those turbines to...
Do we have no authority, those have already been, an actual turbine field has already been approved and permitted by the government?
I understand that, but you're advising...
We're advising the EFSB, the, the EFSB, our advisory opinion is on potential for roadwork, the potential for a noise variance if necessary, something, soil erosion control, things that are, that the town boards or departments would have jurisdiction over. The town does not have authority or jurisdiction over environmental resource areas, including weapons and the bay. Those, those have been clearly identified, that those, those advisory opinions will come from CRMC and DDM.
I understand that, but if you say yes to them, as a host community, you are saying yes to everything else, basically.
No, we are saying, we are offering our opinion.
You're saying it for K.
We are offering our opinion on the things that we have jurisdiction over. This is very similar to other advisory opinions that we've had to respond to for the EFSBs.
Okay, can I finish?
You may.
So it will disturb the southern New England corn spawning, cod spawning areas also. There have been no independent studies done on these areas and it's impossible to know how many species of marine mammals and cetaceans and fish are on with microorganisms will be affected. The jet plowing, when you lay cable, the jet plowing.
We do not have any jurisdiction of jet plowing, Ms. Mallow. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to be fair to what we have jurisdiction over. I'm not saying your concerns are not valid and those concerns, their, their arena is during the public hearings and comment periods before CRMC and DDM. And, and there's a list that, that was on, on the website, on the, on the presentation for EPA, there's also the Massachusetts groups. So there are other opportunities for you to voice your concerns over the agencies that have direct responsibility for the, for their opinions.
Okay, so why are we even talking about this? Because South Coast has no contract that's binding right now and the EFSB won't even waste their time to review this without a valid contract. According to the chairman of the Rhode Island Energy Facility Siting Board, the decision instead is resting on whether the project was commercially viable. He believes there is no proof of that since South Coast had to win a bid, what was expected to be competitive solicitation by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. Keep in mind, the Massachusetts part of the equation. Given South Coast's record of bailing out of last agreements, they are not probably the first in line. Besides, all the extra money they'll be asking for will be trickled down to the consumer. So we're going to take $23.3 million to tear up our pristine ecosystem and possibly ruin it for life, spread it out over thirty-three years. That's a lunacy, excuse me for saying this, but also say it about myself, that we probably won't even be alive in thirty-three years. So we pass this big problem to our children in thirty-three years. I mean, I, okay, think about your age. So where's the benefit to doing this? Money's not everything. Our ecosystem, our fisheries, our environment is much more important legacy to leave to our children than it is, that's what they'll remember. You don't know what damage will be done. We already have some idea around the pilot driving and surveys and loud noises that there's been damaged. Adverse impacts of wind farms on marine life, included that noise, vibration, electromagnetic fields and heat transfer alters marine environments. I don't think any of their actions would, if they think that any of their actions would harm marine mammals, they wouldn't need to ask for incidental takes from NOAA, which is NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. If we allow these international companies to come in and basically rape our pristine Secana River and Mount Hope Bay, who knows what will be next? Another company in line, turbines down the river?
Ms. Mallow, back to the HCA, please.
We can't stand by and not be stewards of our priceless jewel we call home. Please don't let this international company come in here and offer their profit and not for ours. Be accomplice, we would be accomplices to the devastation of our ecosystem, to our marine mammals, to our cetaceans and everything we love for the measly money. Are we that desperate, like all of the other organizations who have taken their money? Their children will always remember your decision and they will pay the price. So I guess that is the answer.
Thank you for your time.
My name is Susan Kamal and I live at 114 Park Avenue, Island Park. And first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for your patience. You guys are amazing. I find the greatest threat to our oceans and our beaches is the burning of fossil We have the opportunity to be part of a solution by supporting the transition to renewable energy. The last, yes, I'm getting to that. The last two storms hit Portsmouth flooded, I'm not going to be as long as anybody else. So I'm just going to read this.
Focus on the HCA.
Thank you. I want you to move forward with the HCA for the sake of our children, for the sake of global warming. Fossil fuels give off carbon dioxide released into the atmosphere, trapping heat like a blanket. To date, oceans have absorbed more than ninety percent of this heat from fossil fuels. And as water warms, it expands, sea levels rise. On top of this, we're getting wicked bad storms.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to be, I'm just going to be fair, state of the HCA. And you did say you support it. I appreciate that.
Okay.
If there's anything else that you could add to it?
Well, for me, it's not about the 23 million, but it's about showing our grandchildren that we try to stop global warming because all our fish are going to be dead if we don't with the heat that's happening in the ocean. So move forward, stick to the facts and save our oceans.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nick Horton. I live at 75 Marshall Street in Providence. I'm a, I've lived in Rhode Island since 2000 when I came here to study ecology and I'm here in support of this host agreement in moving offshore wind forward. I believe that passing this agreement today will help the project be sustainable, will help, will allow it to move forward quickly and fulfill the needs of the state. There are a lot of technicalities to this contract, but the big picture is will Portsmouth assist and collaborate, get paid to collaborate in order to help the rest of Rhode Island, even the rest of the world? To help us make Rhode Island energy independent, less dependent on foreign oil? Maybe there are some uncertainties in this contract. I personally trust your lawyer, but there is always going to be some uncertainty. What frightens me much more than any uncertainties in this contract is the uncertainty of what will happen to Rhode Island if we don't expand renewable energy.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the support, but again, to the HCA.
I assume that people in this room are concerned about the potential dangers of having a power line, with potential impact on their community or their ecosystems. I'd just like to point out in counter that the fossil fuels that we rely on instead cause disruptive and polluting facilities in other places.
I know, but we do not have any jurisdiction outside of, the HCA is really for the town of Portsmouth. We have no jurisdiction outside of...
Sure. There's a give and take in all these decisions and I'm just asking that as Portsmouth gives and collaborates to help make this happen, they keep in mind the collaborations and the accommodations that other towns have given to allow the energy that we all rely on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Christian Roseland, 11842 Hope Street in Providence. My day job is as an energy policy analyst and so I'm available to comment on some of the things I've heard tonight. On the subject of the HCA, you guys are getting a hell of a deal. You're being given a minimum of half a million dollars to potentially allow a cable to be buried. Underground cables are a lot less impact than overhead cables and it's great that you're getting an underground cable. It's, you know, basically, it's really remarkable that these conversations have been dominated by conspiracy theories and absurdities. Tonight I've heard climate change denial, I've heard claims that a European collaborative is Chinese-owned, I've heard unsubstantiated claims of bribery, I've heard unsubstantiated claims that this will endet Portsmouth by paying, by someone playing amateur lawyer. Now, I want to be clear, I don't see any debt to Portsmouth in getting at least half a million dollars, more if the project goes forward, for the promise in the future to allow a cable to be buried. allow a cable to be buried along rights and ways that go along roads. So this is actually minimally invasive. In fact, for all of the power, we all use electricity, and we all got to get it from somewhere. And there've been a lot of fights in New England over power lines. A lot of these have been because they're overhead power lines, right? People don't like to look at them. In this case, you're getting something, or because they're going through sensitive habitats like wetlands or forests. In this case, you're getting something that's going on existing right-of-ways along roads in the least damaging, it's not even going to go through the beach, it's going to go under the beach. This is the most careful-laying plan to lay a cable that I've ever seen, and you're getting half a million dollars upfront for it. Again, this is a hell of a deal. I do want to note that if we held up every infrastructure project with the kinds of absurdities that we've heard tonight, we would never build anything, and we all use electricity. So thank you very much for your time, and appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Tom Greed, 110th Drive. Could we put up Exhibit D again? And hopefully while you're doing that, I'd like to start with a heartfelt thanks to Mr. Levack for his unusual but exemplary behavior in not interrupting folks tonight. Nancy said you guys wouldn't go for it. Okay. Because of my training, I began looking at the financials first. What kind of organization would put out a financial exhibit that does not even add up correctly? Have you guys noticed that? It doesn't add up. Well, take, the total, the total investment, no, the total, total investment, it ends in a three. You add up the two other ones, it would end into four. All the way through, 19 of the 33 years don't add up properly. I'm not sure who put that together, but I hope we're not seeing the sort of sloppy attention to detail that we can expect from South Coast cable investigations. The yearly, the yearly payments for 33 years range from 1% to well less than 1% of our present yearly budget. Under any reasonable inflation scenario, the payments will be hundreds of a percent of our budget 33 years out. Do you really think such minor payments adequately compensate Portsmouth residents for the disruption and risks we are taking? Remember, this is a Massachusetts project, not a Rhode Island project. If Rhode Island wants or needs any of this delivered electricity, Massachusetts will profit by selling that to Rhode Island users. Why should we take these risks for such a pittance when the Massachusetts, when the Massachusetts towns are refusing to allow these cables on their land? South Coast, then Mayflower, provided a good sum of money from Portsmouth to hire lawyers and engineers to investigate concerns about putting cables through Portsmouth waters and property. I'm particularly interested in the engineering studies that were done to answer the technical and environmental questions that have been raised by the residents concerning the Sakonet River. Can you give me a brief summary of the findings the council is using to decide that the South Coast cable plan is safe for the Sakonet River?
We do not have any jurisdiction over the Sakonet River, Mr. Greed. We do not have any jurisdiction over the Sakonet River.
You have the ability to say you object to it or not. That's not jurisdiction, I grant you, but it is a power that this HCA takes away from you should you sign it. Okay, we're not going to get an answer, but yeah. For example, I wanted to know if horse samples were taken along the proposed Sakonet route to see what hazardous materials might be released. I understood in Mount Hope Bay in Massachusetts, there were samples taken. Were there any taken in the Sakonet?
Not yet, but we intend to do that survey work when the time comes.
Okay. I also find very troubling that the actual path is not defined within the agreement now that Montauk has voted against allowing it on their property. If I lived in the northern area of town, I would not think allowing this ambiguity adequately protected my part of town. Portsmouth does not have, I don't think Portsmouth has enough information to sign an agreement like this now. What's the reason for the rush?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mackenzie Scheider, 48th Equinnet Caff, Portsmouth. I have two questions related to the HCA, ties into the negotiation of it. It was characterized as been tirelessly so. There was two representations made that there was back and forth, also that it was received at Christmas. First question, exactly how many drafts of the agreement were exchanged? Think about it like a volleyball game, how many times did it go over the net between you and South Coast?
Well, I mean, like any, in any negotiation, there's notes and thoughts and brainstorming.
I am a lawyer, so you can just answer the question exactly.
I don't know, I didn't have a specific, intended to a question, though, for people
But I don't need a lesson in how contract negotiation.
I'm answering.
I just need the answer, how many times it went across?
I have no idea, I don't have.
Is it two, is it 10, is it 20? You have three weeks since Christmas.
I don't know how many times. We've been, we've been at this for several months, I don't have a specific number, I don't know how many drafts were prepared.
Okay, so was the representation earlier that it was received at Christmas inaccurate? Did I hear that incorrectly?
No, that's when it was posted, that was the, that was the final version that was posted on the, for the, for the community to see and for the town to review and decide. That's, that's what was posted. We weren't posting drafts of documents.
So how many do you think, in your professional opinion, as a lawyer, it went across?
I, I don't have a specific number.
You can ballpark it.
No.
Okay, second question. Exhibit B totals 23 million, what was the first offer?
I'm not, I don't think, I don't think we were in a position to go into confidential negotiations.
It is a public meeting, you can't answer the question? What was it?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into confidential negotiations that.
Where the town?
I'm not going to go into the, I'm not going to explain what people were saying in confidential meetings between the town and the South Coast company.
So we don't know how much you tirelessly negotiated it? We don't know what their first offer was?
This was not a public negotiation where every comment, every, every question was opened up for a public review and discussion. That's not the way this was done.
Yeah, but with transparency, I would think you would tell us how well you did negotiating it.
All right, my name's Ralph Craft, I live at 2327 East Main Road in Portsmouth, Rhode Island, and I also own Crafty One Customs, the 1980 East Main in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. So I own a fishing company, and as we know this, and I'm going to keep this, keep this to this agreement, Keith, I'm very impressed. All right? I look at this kind of like a lease, because someone said earlier that like it's, you know, it's lawyer talk and it's in English, but it's not, right? So this is where I look at this, kind of like a lease agreement. And if you go to, one, I think it's funny that on page five, it falls under cooperation, which I think is quite common. But it goes down and says, "The town agrees to not file, submit any brief motions filing to comments opposing the project and/or offshore export cables with," you know, or just basically it ties our hands. So the way I look at it is, if I have my house, which I do in Portsmouth, and I rent it out and I have an agreement, and not Leese E. that rented that room from my house, basically said in the lease that they could do whatever the hell they want, and we can't do anything, we can't evict them, we can't do a thing, I wonder why that's in there, and why those words are put that way to where we have our hands tied if we're not doing a thing? That's the first thing. Second thing is, the second thing, and to you, sir, I see you smiling, I've seen you do it a couple of times, I don't take this, you know, in any way, fashion, or form, fun. The second thing is, within five years, if they go away and this whole thing falls apart, we're done, we get nothing else, correct? That's it, the money stops, that's what we get. Am I wrong? That's it. So in five years, this all falls apart, in two years, it falls apart, there's no 23 million dollars, there's going to be 750,000 dollars, which it is 750,000 dollars. And then my third thing that I'm hearing today about this is that if you don't accept this, if you don't accept this, they're going to put it through anyway. That's what I hear underlying that's going to happen. And so we're not going to get money. So I have this really weird thing, and you know my background in the fishing and everything you're asking me not to talk about, but I see where your hands are tied, and I think it's absolutely garbage. Right, so I understand you could do this, but I'm against it, and I don't know how in the United States of America our hands are tied to hurt our own town, our own state, our own country. And you, sir, I have talked with you for three years, and we've asked for these, for you to do these research on the Sakonet River, and you're moving forward, and you still haven't done one damn research project. I'm out.
Good evening, guys. My name is Alexander Brock Crable. I live at 347 Broadway in Newport. I like it when you smile and laugh, and you seem like a pretty nice person. A couple things I want to address just first. Are there any other sorts of negotiations that are public in this regard? Or is this, all these negotiations, no matter what, whether it's an agreement with South Coast Wind or anybody else, that all happens in executive session, right?
It's all confidential.
And you guys have covered that, and there's a reason for that too, right?
Absolutely.
Can you explain the rationale behind having private negotiations and why that's important?
Well, I think the point is that, is that you want a full and fair exchange of information, that both sides, you know, have different positions. It's a negotiation, so each side brings to the table their wish lists, say, you know, all the things that they're looking for, and no, you know, you don't always get everything you ask for, you know, when you negotiate. But the conversations have to be honest, they have to be, they have to be done in good faith, where each side into a negotiation has confidence that whatever is being discussed, it's not going to be then just, you know, shared publicly for the, you know, just really to unravel, potentially unravel in even, in even negotiations.
Or for their other competitors, correct?
Or for competitors, absolutely.
Okay, cool. The other thing is, to the gentleman's last comment, our hands aren't tied here, right? What we're doing right now, you guys are deciding whether or not to sign an HCA, there are other public avenues for people to pursue if they have certain problems or discrepancies. You guys mentioned Boong. Can you guys mention other sort of avenues? I know Kelsey mentioned it, I think, at South Coast Wind, are there?
Yeah, there were.
What are the other avenues?
The other avenues are the, well, obviously the Sighting Board, and I think the council president mentioned that there's going to be a public hearing in Portsmouth by the Sighting Board at a future date. They will be coming here to take all concerns that anybody has, and many of, many of these concerns that were raised tonight are exactly the kind of concerns that should be presented to the Sighting Board. When they are, and they'll be here in Portsmouth to hear those concerns. There's also the other state agencies, there's the Sighting Board, there's the Department of Environmental Management, there's CRMC, there's the federal process, there's the Bureau of Ocean Management, Department of Interior, and other states, of course, there's other state agencies as well. So there's a lot of other places that those concerns.
Okay, so this is still America, I just wanted to make sure this is still America, our hands are tied. So this H.
I'm sorry, we're talking.
Yeah, so this HCA is for 23 million dollars and has no impact whether this project is going to move forward or not, it's just whether the town council approves this host community agreement for 23 million dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. What is the yearly budget for the town of Portsmouth? I think last year, like 15 or 16 million dollars?
Seventy-one?
Seventy-one? Okay, so this is, this is roughly a third of that.
But, but.
But to be clear, this money is considered one-time type money, and would not be put into an operational budget to offset normal operational things such as salaries and plow in the roads and new fire trucks and new police cars.
Okay, copy. So obviously over the past few weeks, we've been, we've been impacted on both the South Coast community as well as, say, the Cliff Walk with some major damage. So the 13.7 million dollars that the city of Newport just said it's going to take to restore the Cliff Walk, with funds like that, if it was in Portsmouth, with funds like that cover that?
Or, yes, or the sea wall needed to be built higher or something to that effect, sure. Sure, the lines need to be pushed back, things like that there are. We have a list of projects, projects, excuse me, that are in our capital plan specifically towards resiliency. We also have other projects in our capital plan towards building better parks.
So.
There's a lot of opportunities to utilize the money.
So without this money, where would the funding for those things come from?
Federal government grants, taxpayers.
Raising taxes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Donald LaFleur, 24 seater animal, let's go through it, I know. Okay. So, we can't talk about whales, we can't talk about fish, we can't talk about any that stuff. But what we can talk about was what a gentleman brought up, which was on my mind and has been since the beginning of this, is all the pollution that's in the bottom of that river, that's been there for the last 15 years. And now that the river's nice and clean, if you just leave it there, it's going to be fine. But you start drilling through it, and it's going to blow up all this stuff, and then it's going to go all, all over the place. And this is where you come in, because when it ends up on our shore, right, and it contaminates everything, what are you going to do about it? For 23 million dollars, it won't be recovered, right? Okay. And about this money, because over time, right, this money's going to keep going down. It's not going to grow, it's going to be down, you know? Read this right here. I, I'm just against it, but still, no set in samples, and all that pollution that's in the ground needs to stay in the ground. Period. Good night.
Peter Brothers, Eddie Amrath Avenue. What I'm bringing up is the actual thing that they showed on here was the film of Park Avenue flooded. And Park Avenue was flooded because the storm drains were not cleaned out. And like you brought up about the wall being high, that's fine, but the storm drains are down at the road, all right? Did you notice? You brought it up? Okay. On the inside, the water pushes the sand up and blocks the holes that the drainage is up.
Mr. Roberts, but specifically on those two storm surges of the past couple of weeks, they came at a perfect time. It was high tide and south winds pushing that water up, so even if the storm drains were 100% clear, it wasn't going back out because the tide was higher.
The second rain, my daughter went down there and saw that. An hour later, the state people come down and clean the drain out, and the road was cleared in an hour, completely cleared. So if they had been cleaned out, I don't care what the water came up, it would have left, and it would take a while for those blockages to happen. The flooding happened, and it had nothing to do with, earlier you mentioned sea level. No, it wasn't sea level. It's, that's how low the road is, all right? So what we had was a picture showing the road flooded, and then mentioning other problems. We were set up with this. They were showing this to get people who don't understand the situation, that this was all because of sea level rise. I've been living here 75 years. I lived on, at the beach, okay? I'm living in a house now that my parents moved into, or my father moved into in 1923, all right? I know this area. Alright, I know this area, I know all about it. There is no sea level rise here. Absolutely nothing. And quit talking about it, do some research. Yes, in 1938, the water level in front of my house was four foot five. And there was no name on Hurricane's name. In 1954, the water level was four foot three. Because after Hurricane 38, they put up the seawall. And the difference was, those couple of inches. Alright? And I know it, my parents would take me down with my brothers, throw us over the wall, and say, stay here, they go anywhere they wanna go for a few hours. That's where we would babysit, alright? I know this area, alright?
That explains a lot.
Yes, it sounds easily explained. Because you're not listening.
I am listening.
Alright, well, I know what it is. And the fact that that picture was shown, was trying to turn people's heads around. And tell me I'm wrong.
You're not wrong, with the respect to, there are situations where tides are now higher, maybe it was a maintenance thing.
On the full moon!
But, so the water was still higher?
It was, but that doesn't stop the drainage if the thing is open.
But, but here's the thing, Mr. Roberts, and there's a disconnect, and there are issues with the storm drains, there are issues with maintenance, but there are also real concerns where we're experiencing flooding in areas where we never experienced the extent of flooding.
But the picture was shown of Island Park, that has nothing to do with that.
That's-
It's just about everywhere else you see the flooding, the storm drains are blocked.
Mr. Roberts, I'm gonna give you an example. I look out at Mount Point, right, where the old Marina Restaurant used to be, and the last storm, the water was up well into the grass. Now, I've lived there all my, almost 50 years, okay? The water has been getting higher and higher every year. I'm now watching the point go underwater, to the point where stuff was floating up onto it. There was debris floating up onto the park.
Why was it getting higher?
There's no drainage, there's no storm drains out of there, there's no storm drains. Well, the water's, it's because of the tide.
And it's coming from other places.
Well, let's get back to the HCA.
One other thing, now I'm gonna bring something up. Tane Street.
Tane Street.
Back when I was a teenager, I'd go down there, it was completely flooded. Alright? And it wasn't flooded for a long time. But now it's flooding again. And it all has to do with storm drains, because they are not being taken care of. Washington Bridge, when you come over there to go down a little bit, and go up and go into these parts-
I'm gonna save someone a chance here, please back to the HCA. Please, just, I know-
And certainly, don't point out anything that's fact. Because you wouldn't like that.
I, I don't, I'm not-
You wouldn't like that.
I don't mind the facts, Mr. Roberts.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
I really apologize, I think we'll give, you know, we'll try to give people more time to speak, but in fact, the matter is, we only have 10 more minutes left, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the HCA.
My name is April Suppala, 20 years old. I've done a lot of research on this project, engineering, construction, operation, maintenance, and I can assure you that these towers are not gonna last 33 years. So that's number one. I'm gonna try to focus my comments on the purposes of meeting. And the purpose of the meeting is, do we think this is a good deal for the Town of Portsmouth? I did a net present value discount in cash flow of the revenue stream. It is not for 23 million, it's probably 12 or 13 million. That is, both projects are in operation for 33 years. The minimum required debt is 4 million. The first 500K plus the 3500. That's if they do nothing. But if they do, both projects for 20, 33 years, will get at most 12, 13 million. Second question is, um, I guess, the basic question is, is the disruption worth a maximum 13 million? I think there are probably better routes. The best one would be either underneath, south of Aquinix, up West Passage, and connect to Brayton Point as Revolution 1 is still. I believe that's right, I believe it's Revolution 1 that's-
They're going to North Gibson.
That's going to Quonset Point. So why doesn't South Coast do the same route from basically the same block area, and go in, I'll use the word underneath, south of Aquinix, up to Quonset, and then it's a short distance from there to Brayton Point? So I think that's a logical alternative. That, that's it, fine.
Hi, um, my name is Robert T. LeHane Jr., I live at 154 Cotton Tail Drive in Portsmouth. And, uh, I'll lift this up a little bit. I just have one question on the HCA. You said there's like 2,000 feet that the City of, Town of Portsmouth controls, is that correct?
Approximately.
Okay. Alright. So Portsmouth has been settled since the early 1600s. Um, anytime you dig into something, I don't know how deep they're gonna go, I've heard, you know, 40, 50 feet in some cases, other cases 6 feet. What happens, who's responsible if we dig into something we really don't wanna dig into? In other words, if it's a toxic dump, or whatever, just pollution up the, you know what? Uh, who's responsible for that? Is it the Town of Portsmouth, or is it?
It would, it would, well, first of all, there would be, I'm gonna say there'd be some due diligence done to identify if there was a toxic dump, but I think we would know if there was a toxic dump along the route based on their their analysis. And, and again, the permitting agencies are gonna be the ones that would also weigh in on, on that. Uh, if it's under the river, or if it's under the wetlands, they would be the ones taking, taking a critical look at that.
So they'd be taking samples, and boring rolls?
Yeah, I mean, for something of this magnitude, they would, they would have to do borings greater than the depth that they're gonna drill, in order to understand that they're drilling, and maybe they're drilling through solid rock. I, I don't know.
Well, that's my question, thank you very much.
I just wanna be clear that it would be our responsibility, not the Town's.
Hi, my name is Chris Gaguis, and I live in Island Park, and I'm grateful to you all for the opportunity to let us all speak. And I would just urge you to act quickly to take the opportunity that we have in front of us for the Town of Portsmouth to lead the solution to the problem that is facing not only the marine animals and that folks spoke so passionately about, but humans and the rest of the environment as well. Thank you.
Ken Mulder, 64 Peralat Street, Portsmouth. Been about 32 years since I've been in this room. Um, I'll keep my comments strictly to the HCA.
I don't know how much nicer it is, though, you've got comfy seats instead of me.
Yes. Um, if the Council voted against the HCA, what happens to the cable project coming through Portsmouth?
It, it, it really is still up to the EFSP.
Um, the EF- It could go through. So, so in effect, it's, if it's approved by the government agencies, we're getting it whether we want it or not. This is to determine whether we're gonna get a nickel for it.
This is more about we're getting cooperation with them to mitigate impacts that occur within the Town's property, the Town's jurisdiction.
If it didn't change, get a nickel for it.
Yeah, yes, but, but to your point, we, we, we do not have the final say, and we would only be offering an advisory opinion. And we've done that, as I referenced earlier, on other projects before the EFSP. And those projects could still move forward.
So Montop saying we don't want it on our property, doesn't stop them from putting it on their property?
I, I don't know, I, I don't know what the process would be, and I don't wanna speak, I don't wanna speak to that.
Okay, understood. And then, uh, Council President, I believe it was you that was saying, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, at the beginning of the meeting, um, that you're voting on this contract as it stands now. This contract has a map with two possible routes, and I believe you stated at the beginning of the meeting, if there's a different route, we're doing this all over again. This contract would then be gone, thrown out, and we're going to, you're going to have to all vote on this again.
Well, it'd be potentially on a different location, because it may affect different areas of the town. So this was very specific to these areas where they've done a lot of preliminary investigation work.
Yes.
But it could be the EFSP could say, hey, we want you to look at a different route, which would then be a little bit of a curveball, but there are provisions in here that if, if the route is similar in location, we could probably negotiate something. But if it's a totally different route, then we'd probably be starting over. So back to negotiating.
With the potential of having to start over, where they've already provided another map with routes that are significantly different than the two that are in this proposal, why would we even wanna vote on this at this time?
I, I think the, I, and I'll let South Coast defer. I, I think that these, that initially there were three routes shown through Portsmouth, and I think through the process, it's really been honed in on these are two of the preferred routes that they are trying to pursue. And, and I think it's their, it's their, you know, it's their application to the EFSP and everyone else, so they are going to try and, you know, present their, their evidence. But if the EFSP says, uh, we, we-
This route's a no-go, we gotta figure it out.
Yeah, understood, but, but if they think that there's enough, enough information to satisfy the requirements, then they could absolutely condition or approve that it go in, in, in one of these areas. That is possible.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I thought I was gonna be last, but maybe I will be. My name, my name is Tom Clemo. I live on John Dye Road in Little Compton. This project, as it pertains to me, in Little Compton, only relates to the cable running up to Secana River. As, as a, for the project, however, the the issue of moving ahead on projects of renewable energy that begin to mitigate climate change is something that goes beyond the river, this town, the state. And, uh, as someone else mentioned, if there, if you're looking for perfection in everything, it's, it's like looking for a unicorn. I am so impressed with the professionalism of this Council. Um, I attend some of my own Town Council meetings, and I would encourage them to come here and watch you guys here. Uh, I also appreciate the research that you guys have done on this project. It's amazing. When issues just come up to say, hey, what about this, what about that, you've had answers. It just shows the amount of work you've done, and I think I wanna commend you for how proud you should feel for all the work that you've done to bring this heavy load, you know, to this issue. It's also wonderful to have an open discussion on the matter for the HCA. So, um, as as a citizen of Rhode Island, as an abutter to Portsmouth in effect by the river, um, looking for perfection on all aspects, all agreements, is just something that if you, if you're gonna wait for that, this is never gonna happen, and the climate change, and ocean warming, et cetera, is just gonna continue to roll.
Thank you for your comments.
Chris Carcellar, 63 Leet Road. Um, you guys said that the marked up agreement was put in this weekend? Is that correct?
It was supposed to be Friday.
So all of you feel like you've had enough time to really look at this with every single change, and feel 100% about your vote tonight? Are you voting tonight on this? Possibly?
Possibly.
So you feel that the changes you're good with to already vote on it, just hope, if that's what you're gonna vote, I hope you're good with that, maybe you are, because you're a lawyer, but not everybody is. Um, South Coast was talking about in the future doing Secana River samples. Um, why don't we wait to see what the samples are before we sign this piece of agreement? Um, in the agreement, it showed a map with two routes, but South Coast tonight showed a map with three routes. Um, on the agreement that you would be signing, is it with two routes or three routes?
Two routes, Exhibit A.
Okay.
Two routes.
Do both of those routes go through Montop?
Um,
Portion, yes.
Portion, yeah.
Okay, so if Montop says no, then I'm assuming South Coast will look for a different route, and President said that we would look at a new contract. But looking at this contract, it does say, quotes, or other such locations, which then would be other locations, and in another paragraph it quotes, "The Town agrees not to oppose such approvals, permits, waivers, and/or requests for relief." Um, I'm assuming that means if South Coast finds other routes that are suitable for them, that we can oppose it, am I wrong?
Well, let me clarify what my understanding of it is, is-
Negotiating in good faith.
Negot-
We would renegotiate in good faith over, you know, another, another route.
Is that in this contract?
Yes, yes.
So if we don't go with one of the two routes in this?
Yes.
That's what the states, if we don't go with those two routes, even though he showed a picture with three routes on it tonight?
Right, that's correct, yes. Yes, that is correct.
This is a question for South Coast. What if we say no? What do you do?
Um, if the Council disacts the vote and, and says no, we'll be disappointed with that decision from Council. Um, as noted tonight, we've been working for months in good faith on putting together a solid agreement that we think is beneficial to both parties, so, um, if the Town Council says no, hopefully we will get back to negotiating and be back here with a new agreement, um, for the community to review and give a comment on that is a bit better, um, but we're confident that we have put in a lot of work with this agreement, um, and are hopeful for a positive vote.
Okay, that's noted, what if we say no to any agreement? What does South Coast do from there?
We're continuing to develop the project.
So, honest answer, would you go for imminent domain to go with, underneath our town to do what you need to do? Yes or no?
I don't have an answer to the imminent domain, we're not looking to take imminent domain of the community, but we've continued to pursue permitting a project at state and federal levels.
So if we said no to Portsmouth 100%, would you then go towards Massachusetts again, even though they've said no?
Massachusetts has not said no, we do have interconnection rights at Brayton Point in Massachusetts, and we'll continue to develop the project to make interconnection at Brayton Point.
Okay, where will the line go if it doesn't go under Portsmouth?
We will evaluate other options, as of now, the plan is to go through Portsmouth.
So you have no other backup?
We do have a route evaluation process that we went through when we developed the permits, um, and you could go back into our project envelope. Um, but we, that was a, a process that, you know, was a lot of engineering. Um, and, and through that process and through that assessment, we believe that going through the Secana and through Portsmouth is the safest route for the people and the environment, um, so-
Wait, safest route for the people, what people?
Of, you know, least disruptive, disruptive, I should say, um, rather than overland routes, or, you know, there's, there's a lot of different- Or, you know, there's a lot of different factors that go into route evaluation. So it's, you know, a bunch of scoring, it depends on what route you're...
Is this your first agreement with a town that you've put together for a host agreement on this project?
We're discussing host community agreements with other towns. This is the first one with South Coast Wind to be discussed with a town council.
What other towns?
We're discussing a host community agreement with Somerset as well. Where we intend to build the HVDC converter station.
Were you in talks about a line going through another section?
Of what?
Of Massachusetts.
We're connecting to Brayton Point in Massachusetts. Or our cable will be there as well to connect to the converter station on private property in Somerset.
So South Coast Wind was never talking about a different line going through Falmouth?
No.
No? Okay, I'm wrong then.
That's a different project entirely.
No, Falmouth's...
Okay, alright, I got it.
We do have, Falmouth is still part of our project envelope too. But we... Yeah, so originally, we were developing the Falmouth project, intending to connect to Falmouth. As we mentioned, we have 2,400 megawatts available. And for Project 2, both Brayton Point and Falmouth are an option for interconnection as we develop that. So Project 2 is in really early stages of development.
Okay, but this is the only agreement you have with anybody right now that you're trying to get?
Correct.
Okay. And I do agree with what President had said earlier. Some of the wording is vague. When you say approximately 1,200, it should have said maximum 1,200 megawatts. So if you guys approve to sign it, you're signing it exactly the way it is right now, correct?
We could, if it's a minor clarification like that, and we could agree to it, then...
Because the word approximately is, you know, you're paid approximately a million dollars.
Well, no, I think the testimony or the explanation was is that the cables can only, they're a maximum of 600...
For now, yeah.
No, those cables, those cables that are in the project are, can only, the maximum they can take is 600 megawatts each. So there's two cables, that's 1,200 megawatts for Phase 1, 1,200 megawatts.
Then I would like to see maximum then, I guess...
It can't be more.
When you're vague, when you're vague, it makes me a little nervous.
But less is okay.
Because I feel like there's a lot of things in here that are vague. And so I'd just like to make sure you guys are very secure with your vote if you decide to vote tonight on this.
Fair enough, thank you.
Mr. President, I don't mean to interrupt. I know we are still in open hearing, but I just wanted to note that there's been a motion made. I'd like to second it.
Right. Yeah, we're not gonna vote on the motion.
Carl Van Warredam, 11 Bay Avenue, Barrington. So the majority of people who come up here from Portsmouth have been against this agreement. And five people, five people tonight are gonna vote on a 30-year agreement. My question is, why aren't the people of Portsmouth voting on this agreement?
My name's Bob Led, I live at 155 Cotton Tail Drive. And, you know, all my life, I've kind of looked at business cases. And this is a good case, you kind of see, these are the numbers, we're gonna get all this revenue. But I was curious if anyone's looked at the impact of property values along the routes that have been taken? And will we lose property tax revenue higher than what we would be continuing to get under this agreement over the life of this problem? Right, so, and, you know, if you're gonna put an easement, which we talked about is risk, somewhere values go down when risk goes up, right? And so I'm just curious if there is an impact to the town budget, you know, from a property tax perspective if you're doing a project like this? And again, it's just looking at the business case. So I don't know that you have the answer, but we should kind of try to figure it out.
Well, it's, I mean, first of all, there are some homes along Boyd's Lane, but it's a utility easement, and the cable would be underground. So there really is not, I'm not sure what, like any other utilities, they would be buried.
Well, we talk about the safety of the electricity, but none of us want to live under a high tension wire.
Right.
And so if we're six feet above it, you know, you kind of have to say, is there an impact or not? So I don't want to debate that. But my question is, have we looked at, you know, the full budget impact on what we're attempting to do? You know, leaving it at that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion to the public hearing?
Second.
Yes, we can do that.
Just put in the public hearing. So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Alright, you're the last speaker.
Really quick.
I know.
I'm not well spoken.
It's okay.
This business with China in America, I don't like it.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, 18 King Road, Middletown. You keep letting China into this country, we'll have no country left. I don't care what this has to do with, I mean, I just...
Sir, it's not really...
But I did it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we had a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.